It is a little after 6:30, so I will call our Monday, November 18th meeting to order pro-call. Joel?
I'm here.
Deanna?
Here.
Hannah will be joining shortly. Sarah?
Here.
Nola, welcome. Do you want to say a word to anyone that you haven't met before? We're appreciative that you're here.
Hi, I'm Nola. I'm a senior at the high school. I really want to do the school board. First of all, I'm already doing the village board, just because I want to get more involved in political science before college and really get a feel for what that's like. And hopefully get a better idea of what I want to do for my career.
Carly?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Here. Dr. Slade, has our meeting been properly done?
Yes.
Please join me in a second.
The United States of America, and a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would anyone have to read the mission statement?
I can. The Mount Hora Perry School District, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilling resources.
Awesome. Thanks, Joel. Would someone like to make a motion to approve our agenda?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Tom, to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Someone like to make a motion to approve our November 4th Board Regular Meeting Minutes?
Motion to approve.
On second. Motion by Tom, seconded by Carly, to approve our November 4th Board Regular Meeting Minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number three, addressing the board. Do we have any citizen comments? School news. Nola, do you have any school news you would like to share?
Winter's boards have just started, so there'll be a lot more things to do with that. Bowl today went well. The safety committee was discussing. Don't believe there's anything more to go on.
Awesome. Thank you. Dr. Slade?
Yeah, great to have you here. Thank you for your leadership. And I also, I feel like we're at a rock concert. We're in the middle of the show. They have to acknowledge the people behind the scenes. Tyrus Hastings is on the video screen for us tonight. Scott, the animal, drums in a few minutes.
I had a different nation.
The calculator?
Tomorrow night, the WXB is hosting a fall advocacy conference online. I know some of you signed up for that, and it promises to be a good legislative advocacy. I had a wonderful opportunity to visit with a number of staff members this afternoon. We focused on the new calendars for the next four years. And what we hope to do is to present those to the board for your consideration, either at the December 4th meeting or the January 6th meeting. So more information to follow there. So grateful that they had some input. When you talked about, Nola, the school winter season starting, our esports, folks. If anyone into esports, this is so cool. This is about gaming and everybody kind of strategizing together. They all meet a couple of times a week from like 3:30 to 6 o'clock at night, and they are all in. They're getting ready to compete against a couple of other school districts. And it's marvelous that they're brilliant. Those kids are really strategic. Speaking of brilliant and strategic, I'd like to remind anybody who's interested in work-based learning night and our IB learning night during the second, there are three opportunities for families to come in and hear from Craig Smith and to Lisa Corcoran. That's taking place tomorrow night also. And that starts at 6:00 PM in the professional learning community room. All are welcome to tour, come. Thank you.
All right. Moving on.
Oh, actually, sorry. Oh, sorry. Sorry. Okay. So the 2024 Badger Small, Badger Small, that's what we're in, Boys Conference. Boys Soccer All Conference was announced. And we had three, like games make the list. Brady Rockow made the second team. Uncle Ben Chen was Ethan Gage and Alright, looks good.
Hey.
It's very exciting.
It is great. Congratulations.
And I just want to mention, I know a few of you were probably at the school musical, but just what, once again, what a fabulous musical the district put on. It was really, really great.
And Tom, sorry.
Yeah, I've got a few things. Last week, the parent-teacher conferences were held at IC. And it was nice to visit with the teachers and then all see all the projects that the kids have been working on on the hallways and in the library. Just congratulations to all the kids that participated in the fall sports that have wrapped up. All their seasons were really great, and I know they put in a lot of effort. So congratulations to all of them. And this Friday, the 22nd, is the fifth grade music program from 2:00 to 3:00 at the high school afterward.
That's my favorite. There was all.
Oh, yeah. They have an amazing group.
Anybody else? Okay. Now moving on. Number four, personnel transactions.
What are some of the items for your consideration tonight, please? Motion to approve personnel transactions.
Second, motion by Joel, seconded by Leah, to approve the personnel transactions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number five, our consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to discuss? Motion to approve consent agenda. Second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Carly, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number six, our discussion items. Our committee and village liaison member reports. Adam texted me his education report. So I can share his. He's not here yet. He shared a few quick notes, grading. It was encouraging to hear it's Lisa and by Keith speak highly of the goal and progress of evidence-based grading, even as we continue to receive questions and concerns about it. Also, office assistance being offered, the IDI, as base of schools to our students and visiting community members. IB reflect on Lori's visit, especially her high compliments for Camp Hillary and the decision for a two-year PPS program along with Amy Felton's exceptional outline. Two other notables from Lori. College one-year retention is higher for IB students due to time management and other good habits. From Craig, recognition that we need to build time into the schedule to make sure kids are keeping up because the pace is fast, and staff will be a big advantage for that. Anyone have any questions? All right. Sarah, do you have anything for the community?
No, we shouldn't have a meeting.
And then in terms of the village meeting, I'll share, but then I'll let you anything to add. Please chime in. So the village met on November 6th. There was two things that I wanted to point out that I thought were somewhat related to students and school districts. They had, they started a discussion on having a moratorium on electric smoking retailers. They didn't actually vote on it. They're going to discuss it more and vote on it at next month's meeting. But they're looking to probably test so that they have more time to discuss and research further and see if there is anything they can do related to zoning and signage. And they just have a lot of questions. And I just want to kind of add a little time so that they can do more research and discussion. And then the other thing was that they started to talk about their 2025 budget and the five-year improvement plan, which included, again, related to students, Grandal Park. There's going to be new playground equipment. And November 20th at 6:00 PM will be the budget hearing. Anyone else? Nola, do you have anything?
Well, I actually was not in attendance for that meeting because of the musical. So I'll have something to say next month.
Okay. Awesome. Those are the community village reports. Aubrey and Scat, use of advertising donations and sponsorships proceeds.
Can we talk, maybe, about the distribution of dollars from our advertising donations and sponsorships as a quick agenda setting? We'll talk about quick background. We'll show you a distribution chart that we've worked on, help you understand what our idea is. And then talk about reporting. So as a reminder, even as recently with the North Cape Commons proposal, we heard resounding, or resoundingly from our community that they acknowledge the need to find revenue streams to support our capital enhancement. We will be here for our last meeting at finance, just to, to our instructional and co-curricular programs. And the board was that way, had echoed those requests. So the use of these dollars derived from advertising and sponsorships are designed to mitigate the tax impact on our community within. So this is just, hopefully, an easy way to understand our proposal. We still believe that there are opportunities for non-capital improvements to occur using these revenue streams, but not just capital. And we're proposing that we put $1,000 into, indeed, into the Alumni Endowment for Academic Excellence Grant. If you recognize that name, because it occurs every year, thanks to the class of 1959. So at their 50th reunion, they decided to give us a good sum of money. So that year after, we're able to give back to staff. It used to be just teachers, but now, I think last year was the first year that we were able to give to not just teachers, also staff members. So staff members will write in to apply for the grant. And if accepted, they're given additional funds to support their extracurriculars, et cetera, for students. So for example, last year, I have a couple written down that I really enjoyed. So books that helped kids sound out words, for example. Archery Club, Beau started his own archery club, which is really neat. And there were, there were some key card chairs that helped students regulate. So they sit in these chairs, and they're just basically cradled by the chair, which is neat. So up to $1,000 go towards augmenting that grant, provided that the sponsorship revenue totals $1,000, and you want to have dollars off of that. And then whatever is left over goes to instructional and co-curricular capital enhancements. So you'll notice that there are two graphs or charts here. That one that I just went over is the generic non-scoreboard advertising donations and sponsorships. And then this second one is for sponsorships, because the very kind, generous individual who donated funds for the scoreboard was kind enough to help us identify where some of those funds should be from. And so a third, you know, is after maintenance costs will go to the district. A third will then go to Valhalla. And then another third will go to after maintenance costs. Valhalla, if you're wondering, will help support a new sports complex, just for that in the future. And so our idea is to perhaps help fund that complex as well, so giving matching funds. You'll also notice that there's a note at the bottom, village district joint park space. That means the pickleball and softball spaces will evenly split in terms of proceeds, after maintenance costs.
I think this will be like to propose with them when we meet with them in a couple of weeks.
And I'll probably steal, have I missed anything, Stott or Stewie? These two have been.
You're doing great.
Thank you. These two have been phenomenal. I would not be able to do this now.
So reporting wise, you'll see that in January, we usually collect or receive that total amount that we're expecting for the Alumni Endowment for Academic Excellence Grants. And then at that point, we would just add $1,000 so that folks, or we're able to identify how many folks we can help that year. And then April, we would report funding from that, it's actually the first call now, sorry, the advertising donations and sponsorships. And then in April, we would also be able to let folks know how much we'll be able to allot towards the grants. In April, we also select which grants we're going to be providing funds for. And in May, we'll send a check to Nuker Iron and Valhalla. That's for the scoreboard portion only. Does that make sense to everyone? Any questions, comments?
While you're thinking, one thing that I mentioned at finance last week, but just to remind the board as well, we do have a fund set aside in our accounting structure for this activity. It's a gift and donations fund. Yes, that's not sponsorships, but in the DPI world, we're allowed to use that account, which is fantastic. The money carries over from year to year. So it's handled significantly different than our normal operating budget. So just know that that's set up and ready. Questions?
Is there going to be any, I mean, I'll assume it has, but there'd be auditing on this, just like any other program, all that kind of stuff, all the time of the year?
Just like, especially education and everything else, yeah?
To the point where you think that we pull and look at the process? Don't I? Yeah. We thought that it would be helpful just to get this out now before we start the process in case people have any other needs. It's better to have it before there's decisions needed to be made as to what to do. So this is a thoughtful plan, but appreciate your consideration. Nice job, team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, information and advocacy report. I think identifying all the trends.
Yeah, we kind of put the two together. And so Aaron's going to come down and join as well. So I think if we kind of look at the information to write, the overall goal is to find our, identify our trends. And then how are we engaging our staff and our students? And then that's kind of meets the power goal of increasing our sense of belonging. And so that's kind of all addressed in this, in the report. And so, as you know, because we've been talking, we talked about it a lot, our overall district enrollment is decreasing. But really, when you take, when you start to break down the data, which the important kind of piece to note is that the number of students with disabilities is continuing to raise. Our number of ELL students is continuing to raise. Our number of free and reduced lunch students are continuing to raise in numbers of sub-students within our district. And so our overall numbers of students is decreasing, but the needs are still remaining just as high, if not even higher. One thing that I did want to just reiterate to make sure you understand when you look at the graph for free and reduced lunch, 20 to 20, 20, 21 to 21, 22 school years, those were the years where everybody had free lunch. And so unless you needed extracurricular activities, a lot of people did not fill out the forms because you already needed it for the free lunch, and then we already got it. So I'm not sure that that was quite the decrease that it says that we were kind of up and flowing, but kind of showed it in a couple of different charts, like sometimes a bar graph, sometimes not, just so you could kind of see the numbers and which made more sense and kind of which kind of stood out as, as kind of easier to read. Because like making it into being such low numbers, you wouldn't even see it on the chart. So that's kind of how we played that out. So, and then our making it into numbers are just continuing to kind of steadily since pre, since post-COVID, it's kind of a lower number. And we're continuing to do a lot of outreach. You've probably seen on some Facebook posts, there are signs all over, like Millers and stuff, like trying to, it's, you know, homelessness in itself, it's really, there's the homelessness, and then there's stable housing, right? Those are the two options. And so homelessness can look so different. It can look like living in a car. It can also really, for the majority of almost all of our families, it's doubling up. So it's not stable, we can't stay there, but Ben Ant is letting us stay for an extended period of time. And then I might go live with some friends for a little bit, like it's not stable. And so that's kind of where that term comes in. And if a student moves somewhere else, then, and it's still, they need the definition of making it into, then we as a district provide transportation costs of their temporarily living in Verona, we might provide them. And we have students who live in Mount Hora who are temporary here, and then kind of go back and forth in the other districts. And then we pay, we pay half of that transportation cost of the other district. So it kind of goes both ways. And right now, because of the man, the grant that Megan Hendrick wrote for, would that all pay for it for the grant? And if you drive by district office, you'll see a really cool sign underneath the sign that kind of indicating, and Audrey worked on that with Megan, that just kind of announcing homelessness education week, month, and that's November. So kind of trying to get the word out around that. So now that we kind of know the students, right? If you kind of go through that, what are some, and this is new data that we haven't collected before, that we're going to kind of increase and keep adding more and more to it. But we're trying to ask a lot of different questions about belonging at a lot of different levels. And so that kind of reaches our power goal. We're still waiting on data, sometimes from even two years ago. And so kind of put that in, and as soon as I get it, I can add it. And the Dane County Risk, Dane County Youth Risk Assessment, we, the results are available. We don't have access to them yet, but we've seen all the newspapers, like I've shared all of the results. So they're there. It's got to be soon. So if you go down to the chart below, here is some survey questions that we asked that had to fit in, right? We did a school perception survey at the high school last year. I can be myself. It was taken in February. That's a pretty good indication of feeling like you belong in the school. That was 82%. Then in the YRBS, students who feel like they belong in school in the 22, 23 school years, drastically low. Waiting results for some other surveys, but then we also are asking our third through fifth graders, do I feel included in my classroom? And at least one adult that I feel comfortable talking to if something's bothering me. And I know that that's one of their main goals they're working on. So 82% and 70%. We also got survey results, or not results, but survey indications that K2 is going to be asking questions this year. We're continuing to ramp up what we're doing at our other buildings, and so we'll have more data in next year's survey, too. Kind of the formal surveys, but also the informal surveys that we're constantly going to do to get feedback of where kids are at and trying to connect with some of these kids. Where we want, like the survey results, like YRBS and Dane County Youth are great because they can show us the trend. But really, the things like school perceptions, like I get questions, are really give us a lot more information because then we can look at who it is. And so then those are not, we can actually drill down to who said it. And so if there's something that's alarming, or like, how can we help with this? There's a lot of alarming questions that we can do direct follow with the students. So that gives us kind of the real, how can we help? And then just kind of talking about the screeners. And then this is kind of the chart that I've used in the past to just kind of share like all, like the lots of different things that we're using. And then kind of at the bottom in the blue is just some of the new stuff that we started last year. And a few of these are indirect due to May 1st, but it still shows the power of what happened after May 1st, which was community building. And that was the tier-one approach that we tried to really implement across the district. And I think that that's what made some of the healing come quicker than maybe we've seen in some other districts who've gone through some similar experiences. But the green space at the IC, and then every classroom at the ELC PC has zones of regulation areas for calming down, for, you know, whatever you need. They all have in those in the building. We were able to go to the National PBIS Conference and a whole team. We have the Early Childhood Inclusion Grant, focusing on our inclusive practices, focusing on supplies that, I mean, those are allowing, we're getting, so many of our younger kids are having, or their need to communicate through devices. And so we've been able to purchase a lot of iPads through this brand so that kids can have their own device instead of the adults having the device and then working it out with the kid, but the kid can have their own community events, like the popsicles in the park and the grill out at the high school. We added all the QR codes at the middle school. And then just in addition to all the significant supports, right, that were added there. I see one repetitive. Non-violent crisis intervention training, that was last year. And then another thing that was exciting last year, which we talked about as a whole team too, but at every school site's front page is the training that the staff did on what bullying is and how to record it. So it's directly on the front page for February school building. And so parents have access to that, students have access to that, it's easy to find. So those are some of the things that we've done for students. And then there's also a lot of supports too that have been put into place for staff.
So lots of these are reoccurring, and so I'll try to emphasize which ones have been in place for a while and then some that are new. I'm just going to kind of go down the list. Day of Service, that was new last year. I know you've heard about that, but January 15th, we had opportunities for staff to engage in community service. We have Employee Assistance Program, and that's been in place for quite some time. I was able to talk to folks that, from our EAP. And we have seen increases in the use, and I'm trying to promote that. We can't see how many folks, but we can see how many uses. And though the numbers are small, they have said we utilize it higher than most other employers. So warning is getting out. Flu and COVID clinics, we've done that many times in the past. We have good turnout, 80 participants this year. Last year was similar. We do offer recreation reimbursement in partnership with the Mount Hora Brek. Last school year, $600 was given back to our employees who participated in those programs. We have mentor and buddy programs for people new to the district. This year, for example, we have three new staff members that are participating in the mentor program and 18 in the buddy program. This is new this year. Patty and I are meeting with Quartz Wellness Team each month, and we are able to look at some of our data and talk about topics that are important to us, and then do some specific planning. For example, they provided us some really great information on preventative care, such as our flu and COVID vaccination, just for some information. We're partnering with them to come in to our buildings and share some of the resources that Quartz offers. Last year, Kelly McLeim, and you'll see her name a couple of times in the report, she has led the district in some wellness initiatives. We did a step challenge with 75 participants. It's completely optional and almost a little competitive, but also really fun, and we did that through the winter months. Each month, I send out Viking Wellness Newsletter, and it has information on a variety of topics. And I can see how many folks engage in each of those wellness newsletters. About 146 is the average over that last year. We have a wellness survey that goes out each year. As you are aware, we share those results with the board. Past school year, we held on February 20th, optional session for staff and administrators to come back and reflect on the survey results together. We also did a month of relaxation with Ms. McLeim, 51 folks participated in that. This year was a new one. I don't know if it'll continue or not. It's pretty, pretty new, but we had a wonderful partnership with Zero. You might have heard about some wonderful folks here. Wonderful students in the district who have developed this opportunity for free cancer screenings. And we got the information today off the press. 39 staff members participated in that wellness initiative, so that was really exciting. There's just a couple of things that we had in place this year, especially in regards to May 1st. We had professional development. We've incorporated some more wellness sessions, connecting with one another and physical activity that we put in place in professional development. We are doing staff support surveys so we can see what our staff need. Um, we are doing staff support surveys, so we can see what our staff need. Um, we did one back in May, and we, um, did one, was launched earlier this month, and we'll wrap up, um, later this week. Um, and finally, we did a community cookout, was, um, wonderful opportunity for staff, community, students, everybody just to get together and connect in a really relaxing atmosphere this summer. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions about those pieces, um, but those are just some of the things that we're doing on a pretty regular basis, um, for staff wellness.
I'm curious, the EAP program, do we ever get, do we have any mechanism or get any feedback on how effective or helpful that people use it? With the services offered in there?
It's difficult, cause it's completely anonymous.
Yeah.
So I've had a few personal, um, folks just come up to me and, and say how they've appreciated it, um, but I, I don't really have a gauge on its effectiveness, unfortunately.
That's good what I felt.
It's often like, listen, I ask you the question, how do you know when you're doing a good job of listening? Isn't the response of what the speaker's doing with their head nodding, or it's that they keep on coming back and talking to me? And the fact that more and more people are using EAP tells me that there is some value to add for a large number of our employees, and I'm pleased to see that, that number continues in a positive trajectory. But you're right, because of the anonymity, it all is a very helpful.
Here, do you think that, um, there will be a day of service this year for twenty-twenty five year?
I don't know if that's something we're continuing.
I think so. Um, the, the number of participants versus the amount of effort that went into producing it tended to be maybe a little bit off, so we might just take a breather and meet this year.
Um, I have one other question. Brent, when we were talking about, um, supports for homeless folks and, um, you know, free and reduced lunch and all that, do you think that the families who need information are getting it? Do you think that, that, I don't know, when we, when you started to talk about the signs at the district office, my first thought was like, we should have a sign within that, like, that, that little, like, not free book, but free food box? Like, we should have like all kinds of little QR codes, or like, call this person, or do, you know what I mean? Like, it just made me think like, oh, are we making sure that, if you wanna get the information a little more anonymously, is that possible?
You know, we-
Or do you think-
A lot of the times we, how we find out is when they change it from an infinite campus addresses, or it comes back, it's like not deliverable, and then we can follow up with the family. And so we are able to follow up quite a bit with our social workers, but if they, over the summer, just input, eliminate this address, we would not know if-
Totally.
It was with an answer, it wasn't connected. And so, um, do I think that our number is nine? I don't, I think it's much higher than that. Um, there's also a, a really strong stigma with being considered homeless, and, um, and some people, if you're living with your aunt, like, wouldn't consider themselves homeless. Um, and so there is some of that, you know, criteria as well, and so, um, I, I think that there's some barriers to get over, and stigma is one of them. Um, and yeah, I think that we could try to do some more, so we can easily put little cards inside the free pantry, and always make that's easier to do. Yeah, cause Aubrey did make cards, so we have one sign up, I think it's at Miller's, and it, it has like a, where you can pull out cards to receive more information, so we can get more of those and put it-
I don't know, put those out like the community clothes closet, I mean, it just seems like a natural place to do it.
Yeah, I don't know what's on there, but I know that our social workers could not be closer to the peak, you know?
Okay, good, I think it does.
Yeah, they're super close in connections and relationships.
Well, there's a couple of those little free pantries around.
Yeah.
I don't know where they are, but maybe put them into the additional ones, too, cause they might not be going to the one outside the district office.
Yeah, that's a good one. Yeah, we can do that.
The only other comment or thought that I had, and I, I think I've had this thought before and lost it, but the, the lag on the youth behavior risk, like, as the, as Community Legislative Committee starts up soon, I imagine like that is one thing where I feel like we could take some, uh, initiative or opportunity there to like help push out, like, the fact that it's been two years and we don't have the data is like unacceptable to me, and I don't, I don't understand what the barrier is or what the block is.
And like, it's not useful.
It's not useful, and so the, the fact that, and, and if the press can get it and we still can, like that even, even more infuriates me, because, so whatever-
Is it lagged of asking?
No, I know, I know.
You go back through this, like, any, every, three days, you have to go through them.
Like, so I, I would be curious, and we can talk about this further, but like, I'd be curious, you know, who runs that, who do we need to call, how do we?
That's okay.
Is there, um, for the Dane County one, is there, is more of that's one that we know is out there, but we don't have? Is there, usually you get it in October, and we just haven't gotten it, you know what I mean? Like, is there a typical timeframe?
Um-
And you don't have to say what it is, you can just say yes or no? Or is it always just like-
It's just kind of-
How is it randomly?
Yeah, yeah, there's not a specific time. Like, oh, we would expect it at this point. Now, Dane County Youth Survey, there was, there's a meeting, and I just can't remember if it was this last Friday or this upcoming Friday, cause I, I know I wasn't available at either one, um, but then they're like public, like, they're sharing their results with people in my positions, um, to be able to go through it, so I'm hoping that right after that, we'll get our results, so. So I think that's coming quicker. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey, that, see, cause Dane County was only a year ago.
The YRBS is the-
YRBS is the, over two years.
Not bad, but delayed.
Delayed. And it's just the middle school. We had the high school for, I think last spring, like early spring, even when you-
But either with either of them, like, we need that data, weeks, weeks are acceptable, months are not, like-
I mean, even the data that we have, sorry, no, from the high school is twenty-two, twenty-three, you know, like, it's not even last year's data, you know what I mean? Yes, we have data, but it's still old.
If there's a problem, we're, we're two years past due to figure it out, like, we need that data.
I was on call the other day with the superintendents around the state, and this number just completely blew my mind. Forty-three percent on average is our economically disadvantaged rate in the state of Wisconsin.
Forty-three percent?
Forty-three percent. And it mirrors what you see kind of happening, although we're at forty-three percent, you can continue to see that our demographics continue to change, and all the more reason for us just trying to connect the dots for everybody, why we're doing what we are around university equity and inclusion, all the reason why we're doing what we're doing around just considering instructional practices for a diverse group of young people, looking at evidence-based grading in terms of students being able to master content as opposed to just giving a grade that doesn't truly reflect what the student knows or is able to do. So, I really, that caught me, and I would argue that that four-hundred-and-ten is also underrepresented in our district, as traditionally your high school students, to your point earlier, aren't filling out those free and reduced lunch applications, right? I don't know what that number is, but I do believe it to be north of four-hundred-and-ten, forty-three percent on average in the state of Wisconsin.
We have school districts up north that just, they don't even, it's all free and reduced lunch, they don't even take the applications, because the numbers are so high, they just, it's all free and reduced lunch.
Good work, team. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, you're welcome. Moving on to action items, 4K contracts, Sarah?
Uh, we have the 411 has gone through the education committee, the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, wow! Uh, contracts for our three sites. In your board packet, you'll see our traditional Archangel contract, Universal Contract for Heartland, Jambalikings, and, um, Catholic Christian School. And then you'll see the slightly modified, but we've had the paths from our administrative program, Children's Community Schools CCS. Only two except the main two contracts is down in two, both of them, um, two E, where we put information, um, or language centered around our policy four-eleven, policy one-thirteen, due to Title IX. So we wanted to make sure that our partners, our community partners, were wearing Title IX training, that we have all of our staff do, um, and that information is already been shared with them. And we're in the process, so we have completed, um, registration organs for those sites and teachers that can then complete Title IX training as well. So we have that set contract, because we wanna make sure we support our sites, whether it's Title IX, non-vaccine crisis intervention, CPR, all the strains we expect our staff to do, we expect our sites to do as well.
Any questions, Sarah?
Motion to approve 4K contracts.
Second, motion by Joel, seconded by Leah, to approve our 4K contracts. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any more votes? Lexine?
Thanks, Sarah.
Consider acceptance of funds for the Glenn Spade Memorial Scholarship.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, uh, receive a wonderful donation from the Spade family, Glenn and Mary Spade, uh, for a hundred thousand dollars to help support a scholarship program in our district. Glenn retired, and so did his wife, Mary, from the Mount Orville School District, and so I, I wanted to know who these amazing people were, that they would give so generously. Uh, Mary was a teacher in our district at the elementary level for a number of years. Glenn was also a teacher, a teacher of business education, so he must have been good with school finance along with his wife. And then, uh, he became a principal, and then was also a wrestling coach. And in fact, um, just a little bit of highlighting of Glenn, uh, Glenn also, although we lost him in two thousand seventeen, in two thousand thirteen, was inducted into the Mount Orville Wrestling Hall of Fame, uh, where he was known as, um, one of the really founding fathers of our wrestling program here in our district. So here you have Mary, uh, who is currently with us, thankfully, and her family, they wanna just continue the legacy that have been extended by their life of, of time and talent in our school district, and I hope the board will agree that this would just be a wonderful compliment to our already very strong scholarship programs in our district. Might draw a little background. By, by the way, I'll give you one more bonus tip. Uh, there is a great audio recording of Glenn and Jessica Getzinger, who is our executive director of the Mount Orville Public Library, that was conducted back in two thousand and twelve, that walks through Glenn's life as a service member in the Navy during the Korean War. Renee and I were listening to it just on the drive down to a, an event that we went to this weekend, and you just think about the sacrifices these amazing people remain in. So his, his legacy still continues, I thought that you enjoy, knowing that that's accessible on United Nations website.
Any questions?
Dr. Siller, could you remind me how, what the total quantity of, uh, scholarships would give out annually? Do you know, do you know like ballpark around the dollar figure?
I might look to my, my calculator, friend. Tickling the ivories over there.
Um, there's a number of scholarships that we operate, manage, and control, I don't know, but there's enough, quite a few scholarships that families give directly to students through the board's name. So I, I don't think I'd be able to quantify those scholarships. If you give me a minute, I'd be able to give you a number for what we do either now or maybe after the meeting.
Yeah, after the meetings, by the way.
I think on the high school page, there's a book, there's a book of scholarships they can apply for, cause like kind of soccer club gets out, and Cornet Club, I think there's a whole book of, of scholarships.
Yeah, I just, I knew it was a substantial amount, period, and I feel like it was a pretty large award compared to a lot of other scholarships.
Yeah, but the number did the, that's, I mean, I think Cornet Club's, I think, like a hundred bucks, since, like, the club is like five hundred or something, or maybe it's a thousand, like, those are, this is a pretty big-
Meaningful, really.
Yeah.
If you're looking at about five thousand dollars per student, you would take us, you know, the twenty students or, it's pretty much.
Is there a way to put that money in like a, an account to gain interest, since we can't?
Yes.
All right.
Fantastic, we get that.
Silly question. You're hurting us.
So I just wanna say it's a, a great, um, memory for, for that family, and, um, I was a student of Mary's. Yeah, great family, great teacher, so thank, thank you to them for this great, uh, scholarship.
That's Mary.
Would anyone like to make motion to approve?
I would love to, motion to approve this. Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Adam, to approve the funds for the Glenn Spade Memorial Scholarship. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any more votes?
There's a card that's kind of going around there, maybe that's a chance to think that they should, if people are in trade.
Guessing those citizen comments, future agenda items, if there's anything you'd like to discuss, please let Dr. Siller know, or you know. Our next meeting. Dr. Siller, anything you wanna highlight?
Might I, uh, thank you for asking. A couple of items relative to BGT. Uh, first, uh, you might recall that typically we meet on the fourth Monday of each month, but December twenty-third is the fourth Monday, and so you may know that we've requested to move that meeting to the seventeenth, it's a Tuesday. And, uh, that's the day in which, uh, we're hoping to open up all of the architect and design firm, RFPs, and wondering if it would be okay if our BGT members wouldn't mind meeting in person at the district office at, say, four-thirty in the afternoon, um, we can open those up together. And then, just as a friendly reminder, then, on the sixth of January, we have a special meeting for BGT to interview some of the prosperous. The goal of the meeting on the seventeenth is to identify maybe the top three companies, and then, um, January sixth, starting at two P M., to, uh, interview the candidates. And we have a system in place that we'd like to share with you on the evening of the seventeenth of August. This is not only open to the boards of BGT, but of course anybody else who would wanna be a part of that interview committee, all are welcome, but that would be a mid-afternoon start, a little different, you know, I just thought, and that, too, would, by the way, be at the end of your office, so, um, all are welcome, and I'm really excited, we've got some great questions from a number of prosperous, so, would you know where we are?
Number eleven, executive session, contemplated closed session per section nineteen-point-eighty-five, parentheses, one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require, closed session. Would you like to make a motion to move to closed session? So, um-
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Tom, role code, Joe?
Yes.
Leah, yes. Adam?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And also, yes. We will, it's seven-twenty-two, five minutes? Noah?
Thank you very much for coming. You get to leave now.
Thank you, Noah, thank you, kindness, we appreciate you very much. Oh, you're just trying to mean, just opening things up here, that's how?
Oh, no, I'm trying to turn it on.